Okay.
Okay. Maybe you can do it for us. Before I don't see anybody up here.
Okay, it's eight fifteen. One of our later starts, but we are gonna start. This is a public meeting. We'll reconvene at eight fifteen and we'll start with a pledge allegiance. And our board, student board member Yubora will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get a vote on the motion for the agenda, so that everybody knows, we will be pulling from section K, two point one. Also, we have K three point two. There's a we will be voting on this item separately. And so that everybody knows. And with that announced, can we get a
Mr. President, on K two point one, we'll
Only pulling one area?
Reclassification area.
The reclassification. Okay, I should've said that. Thank you. With that being said, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
A second.
And we have a second by Ms. Gilbert. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda passes.
Mr. President, I'd like to, permission to address the floor?
Granted.
I'd like to make a motion that for tonight, since we can say it's a special, in a way, board meeting, I would like to have section N.
As in Mary?
Is it N?
Nancy.
N, comments from members of the Board of Education. I would like that section moved to maybe in between B and C. So that I believe there might be a lot of people here from the community that would like to hear from the board regarding our board reports and rather than have them wait through the whole meeting, maybe for tonight, we could bring back that section there for tonight only. If that's okay with the board, I make a motion to do so.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. For courtesy for those in the audience, we'll move it between B and C. Okay, so we're moving on to public hearing. Comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak to any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Probably jumped the gun there because we do have a report out of closed session. Dr. Seabrook?
No action was taken.
I'll reread that. Public hearing, comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak to any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Do we have any comments from the floor?
Mr. Raoul Wilson? Raoul Wilson, organizer for the Mexican Political Association. Before I start, I'd like to put this board a notice. I want my public comments to be entered into the public record. Now, I was in Sacramento for four days with all the elected councilpeople and mayors throughout California. One of the things that the lawyers pushed, strictly pushed very hard, was the Brown neck that says if you have a posted agenda, at a certain time, you must start the meeting at that time. And we've been out here since seven o'clock or before, waiting for you to come out here. You're in violation of the Brown neck. Anybody in the community can file with the district attorney and null and void any votes that you take. And lawyer fees are also attached to that. I want you to understand that, so that can happen. Another thing is I want to see that you passed a motion a while ago, maybe last year, to limit yourselves to three minutes, actually attacking Mr. Montes because he was talking for the community. And now that same thing goes on with O'Kelly. Now you're censored too. I believe that this might be unconstitutional. Have you asked the Attorney General for an opinion on this? You better. That's very important. Censorship on elected officials is a no-no. Another thing is what's been happening in these school districts. I remember when Mr. Montes got elected, I made the statement, "It's time to clean the house." All these violations and abuses and child abuse that's taking place in this district has been going on for five years. And that's been on your, on Mr. Seabrook's back for the last four years because that's how long he's been here. I'd like to say one thing. You can do the community a favor, Mr. Seabrook, and resign. And you can take Mr. Ayala, Mr. Martinez, and Joanne, and Do Nothing Wallace over there. You can take them with you. It's time that we have new people come here that care about the children of this district. And we're gonna be out there keeping an eye on everything. So think about it. Gracias.
Do we have anybody else? Dr. Wallace?
Yes. We have Samuel Barajos.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Seabrook, hello. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a lot of students, as you can see, parents, there's even some in the hallways. I think in total, I would say maybe there's thirty, about thirty of us here, forty of us here from the community. So I wrote a little speech. Dear board members, tonight, I stand before you with the plea, on behalf of your students, parents, alumni, and community leaders, to please make the right decision and reinstate Dr. Jack Poster to Rialto High School. Doc has been such an instrumental figure in the district for the better part of several years. Several years, and has continually pushed his students to attain academic and musical excellence. Dr. Poster is just not a teacher. He is a mentor, a friend, and just a stand-up guy. When Doc took over RHS's music program, it had a total number of around thirty students. Since then, it has maintained a steady number of students ranging from anywhere seventy-five to about ninety, doubling every other school, doubling every other band in the school district, and its largest being well over one hundred and twenty. Under the direction of Dr. Poster, numerous, we have received numerous musical awards, including Western regional titles, beating out schools from Texas, Utah, Colorado, and so on, and even a national title, and have been invited to play at Carnegie Hall. Also, the program has led the way in forming a new independent marching association, including schools from all throughout Northern and Southern California, and hosting one of the largest competitions on the marching circuit, now entering its third year. From an academic standpoint, Doc has also set a fine example to his students by himself earning multiple degrees and encouraging us to do the same. He always keeps a close eye on his students' grades. Doc's program has produced many college students to numerous prestigious schools, including USC, UCLA, USD, University of Raylins, and many, many others. Doc has also had multiple valedictorian traces program. He always takes the time out of schedule to help students find scholarships and has attempted, and has helped multiple students attain full rights. And while these things are flashy and boastful, I'm missing the main point. Doc made music fun. He gives every ounce of himself to make sure his students have the time of their lives, giving us once-in-a-lifetime opportunities to travel the country and experiencing things they might not otherwise have the opportunity to do. Doc also goes above and beyond and the amount of time, the amount of time and dedication he's put into the program is absolutely astonishing. Even his recent house struggles, Doc still remained dedicated to his students. I myself am a current employee of him, of a former student, and most importantly, a friend. Doctor Poster, a friend of Doctor Poster. And to speak on a personal note, he's one of the greatest people I've ever met. He always has treated the band like a family, and he has always gone that extra mile. And for him to be taken away from this program will be absolutely devastating. I urge you to please reinstate him. Thank you.
Are there any other students who would like to, just raise your hands? How many would like to say something on behalf of your teacher? One, two? Three, four, five, six, seven? Would it be unreasonable if we said we give each one of you one minute to say something nice about your teacher or some comments? Are you okay with that? Okay, just come on up to the podium there. State your name and you got a minute.
Well, I'm Ariana Varo, and I'm currently the drum captain at Rialto High. And personally, Doc has been like another father for me. As Sam said, he made band fun.
It's okay.
Just to see him out of band, it hurts me.
Well said.
We just need him.
Well said. Well said.
Our band would literally be nothing without Doc. And if you've heard us lately, you know. Without him, it's nothing. Doc is Rialto Band, seriously. There's I'm awful at this. I'm the drum major, and I've been in the band for five years, and Doc is the best. He's crazy, he's fun, he understands us, he knows where we're coming from, he's been through it all. There's nothing else left to say. It's just Doc. Nobody else can be the band director there unless he chooses them.
Thank you. Quick question. Are you also a current student then?
I'm Kendra. I'm a senior from Rialto High School, and I've been in the band program for at least four years. Doc is like another father to me. He is someone I can go to and go with my problems. If I have a problem at home or with friends or emotionally, I can go to him and speak to it and get good advice from him. I can go to him for any problems with schooling. I can, he lets me do tutoring, he helps me with tutoring. He's actually pretty smart in math, know it or not. Just when I go into the band room, it feels like another home. And without my dad, Doc, it doesn't feel the same. No one can replace him as a father, as a band director, and as just the love in the band room. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sergio Nunez.
Welcome.
I've been in the band for about five years. I've known Doc since he first was instated into being band director from my sister. And I've witnessed them from going to total disaster to being the, one of the best bands I've seen in this district. And I've had the pleasure of, in the four or five years I've actually played with them, of of just being a part of it. And he always used to call me like, he never knew my name until I was actually in high school. And he used to call me Little Trumpet, and he always like, thought of me as like, a, like little him. And it's just, he was, I can't say a father, but like a big brother. Because he's, he was just always there. And he just always had the motivation to teach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Shad Nain. Doc's been here since I was a kid. My sister, my cousins, in their mid twenties now, used to have Doc. My cousin used to be drum captain. When I was a kid, I used to see Doc, and I'm like, I wanna be this guy. I wanna be as good of a musician as he is. And to see him leave the band, I kinda see the band leaving too. Having a mentor just disappear would be devastating. This band, to me, kinda would be nothing without him. I, since, since forever he's been here. Just to take him out like that because of one incident would be wrong. Kids are just devastated. They're like, what are we gonna do? Doc's not here, how are we gonna do things? Doc made a plan, and he would keep it in order. Everybody would do what they needed to do. They would play their music, and they would finish school. Doc made that possible for all of us.
Are you a current band member?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Jose Gonzalez.
Welcome.
I've only been in band for three years so far. But those three years are the best of my life because of Doc. He is my inspiration. He's like a father to me, he's part of my family. And in reality, if he had not been there, I would not even be part of this group. Doc is such an amazing guy, his personality, wow. He you I'm sorry. I can't explain my love for him. He's
You're doing a good job right now.
Without him, like how everybody said, band would be nothing. It will have no substance, there'll just be nothing left. We would just be a shell of what we used to be. We wouldn't be able to compete as well as we would. We wouldn't give it our all because we know that our friend, our father, our mentor is not there to guide us, to help us, to show us the way. He's, like I said, those, these three years have just been amazing. And I, and I want him to stay. I want him, I want everybody else to experience. I want everybody to know Doc. I want everybody just to know how great of a guy he is. I cannot stand if, if he's gone by not, not, but not by his choice. If he's, if he's gone, I will, I will think I'd be able to continue on with
Thank you.
Hello, I'm a current senior at Rialto High School. My name is Oscar Riveraos, and I'm one of the band members. And what I would like to say about Doc is that I see it in your position as a very unwise choice if you were to make him retire, make him, fire him, or whatever it is that you guys would do with him. Because all of these kids, and way more, love him a lot. And on top of that, there's some of us, I'm a senior, Kendra, that just talked, she's a senior too. a senior too, and we've been with Doc ever since we started Rialto High School. And because of that, we see Doc as a role model, as our mentor, as a lot of people have already said, our big brother, our father. And we're in our senior year. We've known him for all our time in Rialto High School. He's always been there for us. I've seen that he's helped everybody out with their academics, he's seen to everybody that they could actually stay in band. And this senior year too, we're also gonna go to New York. And Doc had this planned ever since I started personally, when I started Rialto High School. He wanted to go to Carnegie Hall, he wanted to play in like a big place, just over in New York. I mean, anywhere, with as many people as he could. And when he told us that, we were really excited for that, because it was New York, it was a new experience, it was to get out of California. Because some of us don't even get out of the county. And for us, in our senior year, our juniors, sophomores, they, we want to go over there with him. We want to have more experiences with him. Right now, we were supposed to be in concert season, and that's a whole new experience. We had marching band, and that's one good experience, but concert season, a whole entire different experience. That's where we actually get to connect with the director. And this time, because of whatever happened, Doc's not there, and we don't get to have that connection. Freshmen don't get to have that connection. People that are eighth graders that wanted to actually come to Rialto High School, they saw Doc, and they wanted to come. And now, Doc isn't there, they wouldn't really want to go. And us as seniors, we want to see Doc, we want him to leave with us.
Thank you.
My name is David, and I'm, I go to J Hugh Middle School, and, well, well, Doc is the coolest, and our band has an inspiration to be...
You're doing fine, David. I'm sixty years old, and I go through that still.
To be his...
My name is Bebe Diana, and I go to Rialto High School. And Doc is a good teacher, and I would like him to have him there, because he was teaching me how to like, do stuff that I used to not do. And like, him, he's a J Hugh Middle School student, he's not gonna know how Doc is. And without Doc, we're not, we're not a family. And if you see the family, it's going apart. And like David, I want him to know how Doc is, as a great band teacher.
You're currently in band?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a current freshman at Rialto High School, and even though I haven't known Doc that much, at the moment I walked into the band room, I felt at home. I've never felt this connection with a teacher before. I'm a trumpet, and without his expertise, I wouldn't have learned how much fun it could be. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
Hi, I'm actually not one of Doc's band students, but I was in another one of his classes. My brother, however, he is in the band. And whenever, I would be the one to go take him to practice, and I would sit there and wait until they were finished. Out of everyone at that school, these kids have worked so hard to get to where they are. They, like someone said before, they have worked so hard to get to New York, because that is, that was one of their dreams. And to see what has happened is really heartbreaking. I personally was in another country when I found out what happened, and even then, that was all that was on my mind. Because when I see my brother and all these other kids working hard, I can tell that music, that's what they know. And they know it, and they, they were born with that talent. But Doc, he's the one who has improved them and put them where they are right now. And if you see all these kids here, they're all here for a reason, and they're all crying because they know that Doc, he's a great person, aside from being a great professor.
Thank you. Okay. One more, maybe?
My name is Mario, and father for David and Mario. And we have more fathers in the other room.
Thank you, Mario.
That we worry for, this is the impact we have in our houses. I never think that's gonna, you know, I have talking with my sons, and David, David is in the band, and J Hugh, and he's moving to Rialto, to the high school. He's very involved with this band. He's Mario Star, like him, and like, like these kids right here, that's, Mr. Poster, he always is involved with the fathers. You know, we have, son, 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 and in this band, my son is in this band, he always, in the meetings, the same connection with him, you know? He's, he always is a performance to forward, to forward, to keep these guys ahead, you know? This is a real band, this is not like a, like a, you know, regular band, this is over a hundred kids, you know? And this is the impact we have in our houses right now. So, and, I know, not, I don't know if he, if he, I don't know what kind of investigation you guys gotta do, but I live in your hands, I know you guys gotta do the right decision, and I believe, I believe that Mr. Porter is gonna come back with us. We need it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Last one, last one.
Hi, my name is Jessica Nunez. I'm a former student of Doc's and a current employee. I, my senior year, I wasn't sure I was gonna go to college, let alone a private university. And with Doc's help, he pushed me to go to the University of Redlands, and I'm now currently a junior music education major. And because of Doc, I'm there. And all these kids, if Doc doesn't inspire them, motivate them, I don't know. I would like to see, like him, music major, I like music majors, because I'm a music major, of course, but because of Doc, I'm where I am today. And I would hate to see these kids go throughout their high school without knowing him, without going to school with him. And he's just turned the program into a great thing since he's been there, and I think that's it. But, I mean, look at all the kids, look at all the parents, the alumni that are here. There's a bunch more in the east, west wing, east wing, I don't know. But just, just look at the support he has, and if, if, okay, I'm done.
That's okay. We appreciate each and every one of you coming forward. We know it's not the easiest thing to do. Are you the absolute last person? Come on, one more. That's it. You're gonna get, you're gonna get me in trouble, but I want to give you that one minute.
Hi, my name is Akira Heissel. I graduated from Rialto High School 2007. I've known Doc since maybe 2006, 2005. I've had maybe about five, six, seven band teachers and people that I've known, and he's one of the best that I've known. He's still, he's been a great friend to me, still. When I had my baby, he was the first person to buy me a pack of diapers for him. He's, he came in my baby shower, he supported me, him and his wife. I felt, I still feel at home when I go visit the band room. He always says hi to me, we have nicknames for each other, like, so without him, the band wouldn't be the same. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of you. Thank you so much. We have anyone else?
Ms. Estruck. Ms. Estruck.
Ms. Estruck, are you here?
She's gone.
Okay. Like a salmon going upstream, huh?
Hello, everyone.
Greetings.
And I just wanted to say, on behalf of CWA, thank you for accepting our contract, and that was very brave of the students to speak for their teacher. I'm very glad that they did that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Chambers.
President Ayala, board members, Dr. Severin, Cabinet. Excuse me, my name is Leslie Chambers, I'm the vice president of REA, Rialto Education Association, and I'm here to present our letter, The Demand to Bargain. So, may I bring it to you, Mr. Ayala?
Sure.
Comments on the agenda items?
Mike Story.
Familiar face?
I know.
Good to see you, Mr. Story. In case some of you don't know, he's our city manager, Rialto.
Good evening, Board President, Board Vice President, Board Members, and Community. I don't know Doc, so I'm not gonna get up and talk about Doc, so, but what I wanted to come up here and just briefly go over is a couple of things real quickly, and I know you have a lot of pressing business to get on to. But first off, I wanted to, on behalf of Mayor Deborah Robertson and the City Council, as my, well as myself and our staff, I really appreciate and want to thank you for the cooperation that we've been able to continue with some of the projects that we've worked on in the past. And I know we have a lot of things to work on in the future, and I personally want to come before you and say, I think we want to continue to do that, we can do a better job, I can do a better job as a city manager doing that and working on cooperatively to be able to do that with you. And I want to reach out and do whatever we can to do that. I've worked with your staff in the past, worked with some of the board members too, and I want to make that commitment before you this evening to be able to do that. And then also, just briefly, I have some information here about something that the city's gonna be coming up on, on March fifth. And that'll be a vote that'll be taken regarding the extension of the utility users tax for another five years. That'll be voted on by the community, by the residents, on March fifth. And once again, I'm not here to abdicate for it or against it, I'm just here to provide you information. The city provides a, an FAQ, Frequently Asked Questions regarding that, what the tax is used for, what we've used it for in the past, what we'll continue to use that eleven million dollars for, but we'll also, to hold us accountable to be able to do that for another five years. So, anybody that would like information regarding that, the utility users tax, we have it posted on our website at rialtoCA.gov. And also, we will be going around to area command meetings and just providing information regarding the particular UUT. And so, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity to come and just share that with you and continue to build on our relationship and cooperation to do things collectively together that make Rialto a better place to live, work, and play, and go to school. So, thank you very much. I'd like to give this stuff to the student commission, student board member, and be able to pass it around and answer any questions. So, thank you.
On behalf of the Board and Rialto Unified School District, we commend you, Mr. Story, for coming forward, reaching out, because we feel the same way.
Thank you for extending the olive branch.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Melissa Wagenhofer.
I'm a parent, I'm a volunteer, and I'm also a colleague of Dr. Jack Poster. I'm here representing the parents and also our students that couldn't make it. Jack Poster is much more than a teacher. He's a mentor, a father, a brother, an uncle, a counselor, a friend, a confidant. He is trustworthy, respectable, respected, and an amazing person. These are just not my feelings, but the feelings of my children and fellow Rialto High School band members and parents as well. I don't know all the details of what Doc is being accused of, but as a parent of two girls, I would trust him with my own children. It saddens me that the actions of one student can change over ninety other innocent students' lives, along with their parents and Dr. Jack Poster's colleagues. I always thought, in America, we were innocent until proven guilty. Witches of U Rialto Unified School District have taken with Dr. Jack Poster, you have already convicted him and shunned him from his students, his friends, and his colleagues. You make a statement to his students that he has done wrong with the actions you have taken against him by removing him from the classroom. You set an example for other students, that if you behave in a manner that this student did, and again, I repeat, I only know what my children have told me, because you, the administration, and the district did not communicate with us parents, adults, on the issues. That the teacher will not return. This is no example we should be showing our students, my children, or the rest of this band. It saddens me that this man, Dr. Jack Poster, has been removed. I ask that he be returned until all investigations are completed and he is or is not convicted or exonerated. There are many more students that this issue has impacted. It is not one, it's dozens, almost hundreds. It's been a disservice to my children, to all these other students that are standing here, to the parents and to the community, that are now dealing with an inexperienced band teacher, when they had one of the best before. Please help them, help me, help the community, return their teacher to his duties at Rialto High School. I have for you my letter, and I also have for you letters from the other students who could not make it tonight. And I have for you a petition to return, which, mind you, these students and the other band students are the ones that went and got over six-hundred-and-eighty-four signatures. And I'd like to represent this to you, Mr. President.
Absolutely.
So you would take it into consideration in returning this amazing man to my children and to future Rialto High School students. He's a very important part of the high school.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent, staff, parents. I have three minutes, if I can allocate one minute to Doctor Poster. I want to thank Mr. Castillo. What you just saw was raw, was the connection these kids had. Mr. Castillo brought the parents together, he invited Mrs. Garcia, Mr. Camacho, Mr. Bartras, Mr. Avila, Mr. Delgado, Mr. Castillo, Mr. Luna, and Mr. Avila, who for one hour tried to answer our questions as far as protocol, how it works, because as parents, we're frustrated, we don't have all the answers. We understand you have to do the investigations. What we're asking for is if you can just maybe prioritize, move some things, maybe a little speed. Not telling you what to do, but if you can just understand, we're concerned, and we would like something done, but obviously, it's in the hands of how it has to go, the process. So that's what we understood from Mr. Avila and the district, but it was reached out to us in that part. But the other two minutes I would like is to talk about safety and security with all the issues that are going, not only in our area, but throughout the country. It's important that we take action as parents and ask certain questions. Rialto High School, we did a tour, myself and Ms. Palladini, who was an activist as a parent, and we try to do what we can for the parents. We were, we went on a tour of our campus of Rialto High School, and we asked questions, how many security guards do we have, do we have working equipment, and so on and so forth. We met with the principal, we met with staff, and we were, we walked the campus, and we were shown what is working, what is not working. And not only that, but at school-side council just yesterday, for about forty minutes, a safety and security presentation was presented to us at school-side council to share... safety and security presentation was presented to us at school-side council to share with the parents. So I challenged the parents out there, asked the questions. How many security guards do we have? What is in place that we can do? What can we do as parent volunteers or as parents to help out in this, because we need more eyes, more ears? There's a phone number out there, and I'm sorry, I don't have it. But did you know that you can call? And there's a phone number, if you see something suspicious, you can pick up that number to dispatch, and they'll send somebody out there. Or you can make that call. So we're all in it together. So that's all we ask, is for Dr. Poster to consider, and you've heard it, what we said, and for the safety and security, we all have to work together. It's a team effort to protect our children, to protect our staff, to protect one another. Thank you, good night.
Okay, the last person, Nora Mendoza and Veronica Rodriguez.
Buenas noches. My name is Nora Mendoza.
Disculpe, con todo permiso, podemos darle oportunidad a la transitora?
Tenho que ir me transca, gracias.
Oh, okay, okay. No, está bien, disculpe, disculpe. Sorry.
Muchas gracias. Este, referente a la seguridad para nuestras escuelas, me gustaría saber cómo nosotros los padres podemos tener acceso, a saber quiénes son las personas que están ayudando en nuestra escuela, si en realidad se han corrido las huellas aquí en nuestro distrito. Porque se ha sabido que tenemos personas en nuestras escuelas trabajando que no han pasado las huellas y están ayudando a nuestras escuelas. Es algo que de verdad me preocupa como padre. Me gustaría más que nuestros directores se interesaran más por en realidad mirar quiénes son las personas ayudando en nuestras escuelas, como los voluntarios y los entrenadores de nuestros hijos. Porque se ha corrido esa voz de que tenemos gente, en cambio, a nuestros directores no les está interesando eso. Eso es algo de seguridad que me preocupa muchísimo, muchísimo. Muchas gracias.
Hi, my name is Veronica Rodriguez, and this is regarding our safety issue in our schools. Okay, the question that us, as parents, have, that I'm translating for her, is that we know that there is parents working as volunteers in our school that did not pass their test, and they're still working as volunteers. Okay, we want to know if there's a way we can have these people either checked or removed, or how is it that it's, does it work? Because there is a word going around our school saying that the, regarding the safety in their fingerprints, that people didn't pass their fingerprints. So this is just, and also that, well, as she said, that our principals are not really taking this into consideration. They're just letting people still work in the school without passing and doing their school regulations. So this is regarding our safety in our school. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a recommendation. There's no more speakers, correct, Mr. Wallace? One more?
Nope.
Okay, that was it. Okay. And we have kids that need to make a presentation. We were going to start the Board comments, but I think we need to get those kids home.
I make a motion that we move item N from in between B and C to in between C and before, after C and before D, so that we give the DSAC student presentations time to get home and do their homework.
Between C and D, just drop it down.
Right.
Okay. We have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's go ahead and start. Monsieur Borah, you want to start with the DSAC?
First, we have Alexis from J Hugh Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Seaborn, Cabinet Members, and viewing audience. My name is Alexis Rodriguez, and I'm in honor of the new year. I am the old acquaintance, not to be forgotten, ASB Vice President of J Hugh Middle School. Although the holiday season may be over, J Hugh continues to keep giving our Jaguars community more "We Together and Celebrate." Our boys' basketball team is doing a great job in this year's district league, and just this past weekend, our girls' team brought home their first victory. Go, ladies! Plus, our school band just got back from performing at the Citizens Bank Arena during an Ontario rain hockey game. That was a true score, and nobody had to get slammed into a wall or put in the penalty box. Tomorrow evening, we'll be hosting our Family Math and Literacy Night from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. San Bernardino Valley College, courtesy of their STEM grant, will be present to speak about educational and career options after high school. So if you'd like to add some fun to your night, you are personally invited to join us. This Friday, we'll be having our first CST pep rally, and our theme this year is "Jump." Jaguars unite to make progress. We'll be encouraging our Jaguars to jump from one color band to the next on the state exam this April. And we're going old school, so if they don't know the music groups Van Halen, Criss Cross, Pointer Sisters, or Destiny's Childs, well, they will, because we'll be honoring their jump songs for the next couple of months. J Hugh will make you "Jump, Jump."
I like it, I like it.
And in early February, Valley College will be bringing us hyper math, where our eighth graders will virtually build a racecar's speed by solving algebra equations. Then we get to actually race in a computer-generated NASCAR arcade go-kart. So if you see me zipping past on pepper, wave. Thank you for having me here tonight, and I look forward to our next visit in February. Enjoy the rest of your evening and have a safe drive home.
Thank you, Alex.
Next, we have Anthony from Casera Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board Members, viewing audience, and Superintendent Dr. Seaborn. I am Anthony Delgado, the ASB President from Casera Middle School, and Casera is pretty busy right now. Every month, Casera Middle School has a character trait that students try to illustrate. Our character trait for the month of January is orderliness. Teachers invite a student that represents that certain trait of the month to our breakfast champions. At our breakfast, we have mouthwatering French toast and delicious orange juice. I personally love the orange juice. The breakfast will take place next Friday, the 1st of February. On January 11th, Casera students attended a safety review assembly during the PE period. It was presented by both our Assistant Principals, Mr. Gray and Ms. Ennis. It basically revealed the rules that we always had, and reminding students that Casera is a learning environment. And that's what really our teachers, administrators, and everyone strives on. This comment says it so much, it can become our new slogan. Today, our students have their second Student-Led Conference Binder Exchange, which is basically giving us time to write our binders of work for our Student-Led Conference, which will be held March 7th during our open house. Also, tomorrow and Friday, we will be having our talent show tryouts. Yes, our students auditioning range from dancers, singers, and hopefully, some comedians. Guests is going to be, and there's going to be a judge. This guy.
Very nice.
Our talent show will be May 16th. Also, our basketball team started practicing, and they are going to be a force to be reckoned with. When they make threes with the eyes closed, I personally get jealous. On January 30th, we will be having our Honor Roll Assembly awarding our students who received Honor Roll during the second quarter. Then finally, on the 31st, which is my mom's birthday, we will be having a dance in the court for whoever got provision or advanced on their CST last year. It will be DJed by one of our favorite substitute teachers, Ms. Vivas. Again, I'm Anthony Delgado from Casera Middle School, the Casera Middle School's ASB President. Take you enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, Anthony.
Next, we have Giovanni from Rialto Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Seaborn, and our viewing audience. My name is Giovanni Lucero, and I am the ASB Commissioner of Information. ASB has been working very hard these past couple of weeks planning for Rialto Middle School events. On February 4th, we will be holding our first annual Bring Your Parents to School Day, where they will be attending their child's classes, lunchtime activities, awards assemblies, and much more. A day where the students get to show off their good side. Our little baby Einsteins have been working very hard this year for our science fair of February 29th through the 31st. The winners will be announced during the Take Your Parents to School Assembly on February 4th. We are also planning our Hard-to-Hard Dance on Valentine's Day, where couples will be treated to a song, dance, stuffed Valentine animals, and a memorable souvenir photo from our photo booth. This is always our most popular dance of the year. Big shocker. Our Lady Tigers basketball team is undefeated in league play again this year at 4-0. Go, Lady Tigers! It is our tradition to celebrate our CST proficient and advanced students. However, the math department is planning a special luncheon for our almost proficient students to encourage them to make the big jump over with a little more effort in studying. ASB has also begun planning our CST Kickoff Pep Rally Assembly as we head into the last couple of months before the big one. I will have more on that next month as it gets closer. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
And lastly, we have Amanda from Coe Middle School.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Seaborn, distinguished guests, and viewing audiences. I'm Amanda Fierro Colb, ASB President. This month has been going great. We are counting down to the big tests, the CSTs, that is. At Coe, we want to make sure to use every last minute to study for the CSTs. As for ASB, we're planning a new start for the new year. We have planned many service projects and fundraises. We even have a goal to collect 500 letters to send to the US troops that have been deployed. Also, this Friday, we hope to have a noon time activity. The weather has anything to say about it. Basketball is underway, and our teams are looking good. Have a good evening, and I'll see you next time.
Well said. Thank you, Amanda. Well, there you have it, representatives from the middle school. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation by Verinik, Trine, Day, and Company regarding the 2011-2012 Annual Financial Audit Report.
Great, good evening.
Welcome.
In the interest of time, what I'll do is just barely go through, briefly go through the report and then try to answer any questions.
Okay.
As you're aware, the financial statements is the district's financial statements, and our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements. So on page two is the Independent Auditor's Report. And what that does is tell you that we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, the state of California standards, as well as the federal government standards. And after we complied with all those standards and completed our audit, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented. That's the type of opinion that you would like. The financial statements, we had no audit adjustments, so the numbers are the same numbers that you saw in September when you approved the unaudited actuals. So I won't specifically go through the financial statements themselves, but I will refer to page 69, dealing with the schedule of financial trends. What that shows is what's happened with the district for the last three years and what's budgeted to happen for 1213. And as you're aware, you've been deficit spending for the last three years, as with most school districts. Fortunately, the Board had the foresight to build up an ending balance that allowed you to deficit spend without having to do as many cuts as you've already had to do. But I present caution to you, California's not out of the woods yet as far as the financial problems. Continue to hold a good fiscal strong stance on what you're doing and maintain the line there, so to speak. Finally, there's three more opinions in there, and each one of those opinions deal with our, the audit, and as well as dealing with internal control structure that the district's implemented to, not only for the financial statements, but for the reporting purposes for the federal programs that you have, as well as the state programs. And what I, on page 84, there's the summary of those opinions. And again, the opinion on the financial statements was an unqualified opinion. The opinion on the federal compliance is that you had an unqualified opinion. And the opinion on the state compliance issues was, again, another unqualified opinion. So those are all good reports from your independent auditors to you. There is a management letter dealing with ASB issues. And finally, there's what we call the SAS 114 Letter, Statement on Auditing Standards. As you know, we primarily deal with management conducting the audit, so our standards were changed a few years ago to specifically address a letter to the governing board. And what that does is tell you that we conducted our audit in accordance with our audit contract and our engagement letter that we had. We reviewed the accounting principles and disclosures that the district had, and there were no changes in the type of principles that were used from one year to the next. So that lets you place some reliance on the fact that you compare one year to the next. So that's good. We looked at the estimates that were used, and the most significant estimate is your estimate for your OPEB liability, your other post-employment benefits liability. And that's supported by an actuarial report. These are all good things that the support there is. We didn't have any audit adjustments, like I indicated. We didn't have any items that made difficulties with management during the course of the audit, so that's a good thing as well. And so, from my standpoint, the audit went well. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm just thinking, the Proposition 30.
Yes.
Would you say this stabilized or gave us a little bit of an edge to help maybe challenging, pressing issues?
Well, as you know, the governor had already budgeted that being passed, and consequently, it really generates no new additional income to you, other than what he'd promised you back in July. So presumably, it's going to pre, it's going to allow for a new revenue stream that hopefully some of the cuts that might have had to be done will not happen in the future, but I, you know, I'd wait till you get the money. Anything else?
So, I guess I'm hearing it's still more of a stabilization-type scenario?
Yes, for at least 1213.
1213.
What is the meaning of an unqualified opinion?
That means that there was no material misstatements that the accounting principles used, or, if you had a qualified opinion, that would mean that we had a problem with the audit, we couldn't agree with management, or you could have an adverse, which is even worse.
And I'm sorry, I didn't get your name?
Greg Cook.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I believe this is the third audit report that, since I've been on the Board, that I've gotten an opportunity to review with you guys. And year after year, there seems to be difficulties with ASB and cash flow with ASB. What would you say has changed this year as opposed to the previous two years?
Well, as you're aware, we go from one school to another. We don't hit all the schools at the same time. So ASB accounting is difficult at best for the sites, primarily because you have volunteers dealing with cash and cash dispersments. Consequently, they don't have the same good structure as the district office would have with receiving of cash and dispersing of cash. So what we do is we go to the various schools on a rotational basis, and even though we might not have selected your school this year, each principal, site administrator ought to be looking at the findings there at the, dealing with the ASBs, and then kind of apply it to their school and make sure that they're not guilty of the same issues that are there.
And perhaps it'd be a good idea that, to avoid issues coming up with the ASB finances, that we implement a district-wide, or that we make sure the district-wide procedure is implemented, because this is one issue that keeps coming back every year, and I want to thank you guys for doing a good job and pointing that out to us.
Thank you.
So, you know, so that way, next year, if it's you guys, or if it's another auditor, this issue doesn't come up again.
Yeah, your goal is to clean them all up, but my history of, actually, I was, my first audit here at Rialto was in 1975, and we had ASB issues back then, too.
You guys have been here that long?
That was my first time that I did an audit.
Thank you. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
No further questions?
I do have a question, but it is for the Superintendent to address our Fiscal Services Department. What are we doing about the ASB accounts for the public to know? I see what we're doing internally, and I see what we're doing. I see what we're doing internally, and I see what we're doing if we take action tonight, but the public really could use knowledge of that. Doc, if we could ask that of Sharon or Mohammed, that's fine.
A member of the board, we are currently working to bring a professional to provide the full-blown training for our ASB staff at the school side, from administrations to their sta, and as well as the staff mandatory training, to understand their roles and obligations to safeguard student funds, their raised money, or whatever source of the funding they're getting. And tonight, you also see an item on the agenda for action, for your approval, to, that's a part of the, I call preventive steps we're taking to ensure that the money being safeguarded and secured and deposited on time to the bank. We will, we're being a contract to transport our cash deposit to the bank, to ASB account on time. So there'll be no surprise to us that there's a fund being missed or missing or misplaced. The training is a key element to ensure our staff understand and do their part to safeguard and follow all the rules and guidelines. So we, I strongly felt that necessary. And I'm going to bring a contract to the board for approval. The training will happen between now before July, and this will be district-wide training for all site staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, I guess that takes care of all the questions, unless you have another comment?
No, sir.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have superintendent's report.
Steve Johnson, teacher, coach, and athletic director at Eisenhower High School, was shot multiple times by three assailants on Monday evening. He is presently hospitalized and in stable condition. I'd like to share a letter that was sent by San Bernardino Councilwoman. Good morning. I just wanted to let you know that the San Bernardino Police Department is working diligently on the case involving attacks on Mr. Johnson. Police detectives are left with evidence to solve this crime committed against Mr. Johnson. Police Chief Handy is aware of my special interest in this case and assures me that his staff will work tirelessly until an arrest is made. In the interim, my thoughts and prayers are with Mr. Johnson, and I'm hoping for a full recovery for him. This is signed sincerely, Virginia Marquez, Councilwoman of First Ward, City of San Bernardino. Today, Mr. Ayala and I had a chance to visit with Steve this morning. He was in good spirits, joking around, but we did realize he was in considerable pain. And the family has asked that, at this time, there not be a lot of visitors, because he needs to be rested for the time that he's there. We got a call from Dr. Gary Thomas, County Superintendent of Schools, sharing his concern and best wishes for Steve. Many of the high school basketball coaches throughout the southern section of CIF have called. Many of his former players who were in college, community college and four-year schools have also called to extend their best wishes. Many parents, supporters and fans. There were two parents there this morning who were sitting with his mother, and they shared their feelings with Mr. Ayala and myself. For any of you who would like to send cards or acknowledgements to Steve, please contact the principal at Eisenhower High School, Art Sanchez. For all media-related issues, please contact Saeda Joffrey. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seaborn. And at this time, we'll go ahead and continue with the board comments, starting with our student board member, Yubora.
Thank you.
We moved it up. We moved it up. Go ahead.
I would just like to point out a few things that would be happening at Carter High School this week. We'll be having our blood draft. It's going to be this Friday, seven forty-five to one o'clock PM. If anyone interested in donating blood, just stop by. It will only take a couple of minutes to help save a life. And I would like to say good luck to all the tenth graders of all the high schools in Rialto that is going to be taking the California exit exam on the fifth to the sixth, I believe. And this last weekend, I had the opportunity to volunteer for this program. It's called the Outreach Program, and it's run by Dr. Teresa, and it's in Rancho Cugamunga. It's a really good program. We pass out food to families who's, who are in need. If anyone wants more information about it, just ask me after the meeting. I will give you more information if you want to volunteer. They have it every other Saturday, and there's going to be another one on the second. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, board member, Ms. Gilbert.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Ayala. In lieu of the time that we have, I'm just going to say thank you to the DSAC students who waited so patiently. They'd been here since six-thirty, and they patiently gave their reports, so I just want to say thank, thank you to them, and that's my report.
Thank you. Next, board member Nancy O'Kelly.
Well, first of all, I would like to wish Coach Johnson a speedy and complete recovery. What happened to him was terrible, and I certainly hope he gets better quickly. One of the things I discovered after the last meeting that I had concern about is that the comments from the public and from the board members are not being summarized and written in the board agendas. We have always done this in the past. I don't know when it was stopped, but that is the public record of what was said at the meeting. And I know when we make our comments, we like to feel they're important and meaningful, and it is part of the public record. So I would like that to be started again immediately, that all, any comments from the public and the board comments are summarized and published in the board agendas, because I think it's really important. The other thing, I've had several complaints from students at the high schools who are very upset about having to rent their graduation caps and gowns instead of purchasing them. It's actually considerably cheaper for them to purchase the gowns as we used to do than it is to rent the new gowns. At least one high school principal has told the students that this is because of a new law. I don't know of any such law that says that students have to rent gowns instead of purchasing them. Typically, what it is, is the students purchase the gowns, and we have an option, a cheaper option, for students to rent them if they can't afford to purchase them, or something to that effect. We need to review the policies with our company that is handling our graduation affairs, because these things have to be affordable, and the students are upset, and the students don't like being told it's a lie if it's not a lie. And I'd like to add that as a former high school principal, I feel the best way to solve this problem, allow each individual high school ASB to sell the gowns directly. That creates a great source of revenue for the high school, and it also, you know, inhibits, I mean, I don't understand why we're making these other companies rich instead of earning the money ourselves and keeping it at the school sites ourselves. And we could purchase the graduation gowns, and then we resell them to the students, and that creates revenue for each of the high school ASBs, which creates money for student activities and other things for our students. So I would like to throw that out there, that I think that is an excellent way to go with graduation, and the students are not happy the way it is right now. So I just wanted to say that on behalf of the students, and I hope everybody, I do wish the tenth graders luck on their KC, too, and I hope they understand how very important it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, next, we have the clerk of the board, Mr. Joe Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank everyone for their patience with this long board meeting. We were doing the people's business, and it was very difficult. We had much to review. With that, I just want to end my comments because of the hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next, we have Vice President of Board, Mr. Edgar Montes.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. I know that we're facing some tragedies, and my heart goes out to Mr. Steve Johnson and his family. You know, it's very, very tragic what he's going through right now, and it's a hardship, not only for him, but his family. So our thoughts and prayers are with them. I just want to welcome everyone here today. For obvious reasons, we have an extremely large amount of people in attendance from the community and surrounding communities, and I just want to welcome you to our district and change a little bit the perception that's been focused on us lately. We, I believe I can speak for all of us here on the board when I say that we are very proud of our teachers, and we're very proud of our employees, and we're very proud of ourselves. Nobody's perfect. We try to do the best for the students, for the community, and for ourselves. We don't wish any bad on anyone, and we don't want there to be a perception that we don't care. Whenever there's issues, serious issues that come forward, we address them according to protocol, according to procedures, and we just want the community to know that we care about every single child just as much as we would care about our own child. And again, I think we've been taking a little bit of a beating lately in the press, and I just want everyone to know that we have total faith in our teachers and in our employees. And any concerns that might come forward, concerns have been coming forward here at some of the board meetings, we're addressing head-on, and we just want to assure the community that we're not just sitting around. We're doing what we need to do, and we're giving direction to our superintendent, and we have faith that he will do what's right, and our staff, our cabinet will do what is right for our community and for our children. Another thing I wanted to report on was elementary visitations that I had recently at Garcia and Morgan. I didn't announce I was going to be stopping by these elementary schools. Sometimes I call the principals ahead of time, sometimes I don't. I took an oath when I got elected to the board that I was going to go visit all of our schools and, you know, and just see, the best way to see how we school operates. The best way to see the culture of a school is to visit the schools during operating hours. And I've recently visited Garcia, I recently visited Morgan, and board president, if I could just have a little bit of extra time. And I want to thank the principals for welcoming me and taking a little bit of time out of their busy days to give me tours of their schools. But I do want to address some concerns I have in light of many, many security scares and tragedies that have happened in our country. I think it's important that all of our schools have cameras set up. Some of our schools have camera systems, some of them don't. And I think it's especially important that we have cameras put into all of our elementary schools, middle schools and high schools. Garcia and Morgan both do not have cameras, and maybe I shouldn't have announced that, but we need to make sure that we get them, because we passed, the voters passed, a measure Y bond to make sure that we get the resources to make sure that our schools are safe, to make sure our schools are healthy, and to provide the best learning environment for our students. It would curb not only the theft of copper that has tricked for years in surrounding districts, but it would also be the first eye to alert us if any potential dangers at our elementary schools. Garcia, of course, is a little bit newer. Morgan is a little bit older. Morgan is one of our oldest schools. For those who don't know, it's just around the corner. And what concerns me about Morgan is how open it is. Anyone could just walk in. Anyone could just run to the back. We don't know how to distinguish parents from non-parents. I would like to see we utilize our Measure Y money to really implement better security for our schools and provide our students with that safety and the parents. And then just one last thing. Also, I just wanted to comment regarding the board comments not being documented on the agenda reports. I brought this up various times in the past, and it fell on deaf ears, so it gives me some joy to hear that another board member is also requesting that the board minutes be documented and printed on the board agendas when we approve the minutes, because it did used to be printed before. And I want to thank the gentleman who requested for his comments to be printed also in the board agenda, because it's something that we should just, for transparency reasons, already do. And last but not least, I want to be honest and let you know, Nancy, that I didn't buy a cap and gown when I was in high school, because I couldn't afford one. One of my relatives handed me down their caps and gowns. So if we're forcing, or if anyone is forcing students to rent caps and gowns, I think it's a huge injustice, because if they have brothers and sisters that are in line, they might be able to use those as well. So I just want to end with that and thank everybody for coming here tonight. We know it was a long meeting. And last but not least, I want to thank the parents, that, all of the parents and the students that came to speak. Muchas gracias. And I just would like to end translating that. Quiero que la comunidad sepa que vamos a hacer todo lo posible para asegurar las quejas que tienen sobre lo que vienen a informarnos. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. I would like to begin by thanking again everyone for their dedication, for participating in tonight's meeting. I know it's a lot of time from your busy day, it's a long day, so I'll try to keep my comments short, but I will tell you, when I heard the news about Coach Johnson yesterday, I got immediately sick to my stomach. I got weak to my knees. I had to sit down, collect self and think about what's important. And, you know, there's nothing more important than a human being, and our toughest decisions involve human beings. And that's why we're here, because we care. And I think we care more than we care about ourselves, because you've been good to us, the kids deserve it, this community is a great place to live, and you need leadership who understands and feels it in their hearts. And when those kids came up tonight to speak, it was real, and we want to be real with you, too. Thank you. We'll keep moving on. Next, we have Public Information and Correspondence. High school graduations will take place on Sunday, June 2nd, 2013, at the AEG Citizens' Bank Arena in Ontario. The times are as follows. Rialto High School, ten o'clock. Eisenhower, one PM. Myler, four PM. Carter High School, seven PM. Next, the schools will be closed Monday, February 11th, 2013, for Lincoln's Day, and Monday, February 18th, 2013, for President's Day. A special board budget study session of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, February 6th, 2013, at four o'clock PM at the Dr. John R. Casalunas Educational Center, right here, 182 East Walnut Avenue, Rialto, California. A reminder, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, February 13th, 2013, at seven o'clock PM at Boyd Elementary School, 310 East Merrill Avenue, Rialto. Next, we have the Consent Calendar Action Section. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the Board of Education to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board considers the motion unless members of the board, administrative staff, or public request special items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Earlier, we said we had pulled reference K 2.1. So can I have a motion to approve E through I with exception of K 3.2, which will be pulled?
That's in a different section.
That's in another section.
That's in our action items.
Okay.
Both items that need to be revised are.
Under J.
Okay. So then we just need a motion on E through I.
I did have a question on H 2.
Okay, Nancy, H 2?
We need to move in second and first.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
This is for approving the minutes, and we have a discussion on H 2, and then we'll vote on accepting.
Yeah, this is to approve the purchase order listing. I just had a question. I wasn't sure if it's, well, I just wanted to know why we had five orders to Mabel's flowers and why we are using taxpayer money to purchase flowers.
Dr. Sevam?
Mohammed. I need to research on this matter and get back to the board with all the detail, if I can, please, in order to get back to you in writing.
Okay, it's, I know we've had some losses in the district. That occurred to me, that maybe we had sent flowers to the family, but usually that's done by a collection, not by school funds, so that's what I'd like to clarify.
Okay, I'll put in writing.
Okay. Any other questions or items for discussion?
We're just going up to I, right?
We're going up to I, and we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Vote by student board member?
Vote by student board member, thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Next, we have facility planning items. We have none. Go move on to J, discussion action items. Discussion action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. And as I said earlier, we had, we were pulling reference K 2.1 from the discussion action items, and we were also going to make a, we're going to vote on K 3.2, the Eisenhower separately. We'll make a correction.
As we accept the agenda, I'd like to amend K 3.2 for Eisenhower to read 130 hours at the suggestion of another board member.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so.
Mr. President, on K 2.1.
Yes.
We have to specify we're just dealing with the reclassifications.
I said that earlier and I forgot. K, there's a correction here on K 2.1. It deals with just the reclassification section to be pulled. Thank you, Dr. Sevam. Okay, so do we have a motion to accept?
We also, on K 3.2, there was the other category that needed to list the funding source that was not listed there.
I move that we accept the agenda items, reference J through L as amended.
What was the number, Nancy?
It was K 3.2. There's a lot of them. It was that one particular one.
We're asking for Mohammed a funding source. We listed the position, but we need to know how it's funded.
Yes, I can respond back to the board.
It's the one at the top of the page.
Yes.
10% of salary.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to respond in writing to, give you the informations in writing.
Okay. And I also had comments about J 12.
J 12.
We need to second and accept them.
Okay.
Do we make the motion?
We, before we move on to J 12, we have a, we have a motion?
A motion to accept as amended.
Okay.
We need a second.
We need a second.
Second.
Second. Okay, and before we all approve, we have a discussion on J 12.
Yeah, this is the item about using an armored car service to transport ASB funds. I have a couple of concerns with this. The first of which is, with ASB, the minute they hit a certain amount of money, it has to be taken immediately to the bank. And I'm not sure, I don't know where this company is located, but how quickly could they respond to that and get it to the bank? They can't just come once a week and pick up money, because at the high school level, when you are doing a lot of ticket sales, you are collecting a large amount of money. And we don't ever let it go beyond a certain amount before we get it to the bank, so that we don't have any of those problems. So that's my first concern. My second concern is that the cost of $15,000 is going to be taken out of ASB funds, and our ASBs are not making enough money as it is to do the things we need to do for our students. I mean, if the district wants to pick up the tab for this, and we can arrange with the company to pick this, you know, just be on-call when we need them, then it's a great idea. But for it to be taken out of ASB funds, no. I mean, we have a lot of things that we cover with ASB funds, our programs, our athletics, our everything, and that's a lot of money to come out of their ASB accounts. So I cannot in good conscience do this to them.
Any more discussion on J 12?
It says on a schedule and on-call for the first item. Then it says cost to be paid from ASB funds for the schools and the general fund for the district office, so.
So it's not all, the $15,000 is not all ASB money?
May I, may I respond, members of the board? Just to make the matter, clarify this, the $15,000 relate to all money picked up from every high schools and middle schools. So it's not one school paying $15,000?
No, I know that.
The distribution, the cost of these services is $140 per month, per school. And so in addition, we're also going to have the fund deposit picked up from district office. At present time, our employees traveling with the money to the bank. It's unsafe environment, as you know, what's going on in the economy, everything else. So our employee safety is our, should be our concerns. At present, what's happening to the money, how money being traveled from a school to the, to the bank and not being deposited on time. So this arrangement is not only employee safety is concerned, also in securing the fund depositing to, carrying the bank to the armored car on, as scheduled daily and weekly and on-call. At present time, this contract called for, the high school will have a two-days pickup, Monday and Friday, because of their event is mostly, most of the Friday weekend event, and they will have on-call. So there's fees scheduled based on call, and this fee is scheduled to pick up twice a week from high school and once a week from middle school. And I work through the principals to ensure the arrangement is, makes sense from their perspective in terms of depositing the money to the bank to their respective account. The fund, this is money related to the ASB. I understand, Mrs. O'Kelly, you're concerned that this is the money, students' money, and at present time, how the fund being misplaced, missing, and not being accounted for, this will secure everything was happening to the school right now. As you heard from the auditor, there's a lot of findings in terms of how fund being handled at the school side, so.
Well, I think the missing funds, that was at the site, that wasn't in the transportation to the.